Okay, welcome everyone. Short and long agenda, I don't know if we're gonna cross a lot of things out, so it's gonna be short. Any questions, okay.
That works.
First we have a continued budget discussion. Michelle, would you like to take the floor?
Sure. So everybody got the tentative budget emailed out last week. I haven't made any changes since then, but it reflects some of the things that we talked about two weeks ago. Big items that we need to still decide are capital projects. And when we get into the financial report after the budget discussion, I have some better fund balance numbers. So I don't know if we actually wanna do the financial report first real quick, so that we can have a fund on, an idea. So this is a quick projection of where we're gonna be, I think, at the end of the year. But it's not conservative. I usually do very conservative numbers.
And this isn't, is that what you said?
Yeah, these are a little more, they're realistic and they don't account for anything that I don't know about, or you know, something really breaks. They're pretty much what I know. So revenues over expense through the end of the year, we might end up with like one hundred and fifty thousand over in revenue. Which is a big number. So obviously, I don't wanna use all of that. I don't think it's all gonna go into fund balance. I think we need to have some of that one fifty contingency. Because like I said, they're very real numbers.
I see recycling has gone up again.
Yes.
It's now eighty-one dollars a ton.
Eighty-two to be exact.
I just saw that.
Eighty-one ninety-nine, as of February.
Yeah, it was a big jump from January to February, and it was over ten dollars.
And if we look at it, last year we got money back. And this year we're paying eighty-two dollars a ton.
So...
There's no market for it anymore.
So what did you calculate, two thousand nineteen twenty budget, based on?
Eighty-two dollars a ton.
Okay, great.
So for this year, like I said, one fifty. I know that Mayor Morandi wanted to look at a few things in this budget year if we had them.
Yes.
And then that we wouldn't have to put it off till next year. One way or the other, if we do it in May with this surplus, or we do it in June with the fund balance, it's the same pool of money. So like the roof up here, if we wanna get it done, we should just do it to avoid further leaks. So that was one of your questions, can we afford to do the roof? Yeah, we could safely afford to do the roof. Do you have a number for the roof?
For the roof? I just, you know, I got this, one thing that I maybe won't do again is not have a list of everything to compare things apples to apples, 'cause some of them can end differently, but I just got the last from Easy Fly, just sent their quote in, but it wasn't prevailing wage. They didn't include cats on the roof. It was a ten-year warranty. So I had to add those numbers up. It's probably lower than the other ones, but I don't feel comfortable with them. They're too low. So I think the cost is eighteen thousand six hundred would be.
Well, let's call it twenty.
Okay.
Once they get up there, you know. So twenty for the roof.
I would like to do the, I'd like to have the engineering done for Fishkill Ave, if everyone agrees with that.
Fishkill or Garden?
Fishkill and Garden.
Okay.
I'd like to have the engineering done anyway. Or well, not the, yeah, just Garden, sorry. Fishkill, we're still looking. The drawings that I sent that were supposed to be CAD aren't CAD, whoever sent them. So I'll have to find, they're in some other format. We tried to open them. I'm not the computer person, my wife is. It's not CAD, they're something. So we have to talk to them and see how we can get hard copies.
They may not...
There are, so I, we paid for this work.
We paid for the work, and they, you've ever seen the size of CAD drawings?
What's that?
Have you ever seen the size of CAD drawings?
No.
Let me see if I...
It might even be worth, if we have to pay a couple hundred dollars for them to send it to Blue or whatever, Great Printing or something, to get the drawings.
Okay.
I think that might be worth it.
Yeah, we definitely, it'll definitely be worth it. I mean, we, I don't know how much engineer will be, if they did all the engineering already, I don't think we could have our engineers look at it.
Did any engineers give you an estimate, a rough estimate for Garden Engineering?
The Garden, yeah, I don't have it on me though. I think it was around thirteen? For the engineering.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know.
It was on the quote.
It was on the quote, it was on the front quote. I can get that to you tonight, or I'll get to you tomorrow.
That's fine. Any other big projects, wish list items?
I mean, if we could, if, depending on where the, where it comes in on the, I know we're not gonna be able to get the wall, and that's not gonna be done at the time. So maybe the floor on, in, at the firehouse. And I don't know what that's gonna be.
Is that the most critical element there?
Well, the heat, well, nothing's, everything's the way it's been. So heating needs to be redone, but it's still working. The floor's sunk a little bit, but it's not like it's caving in. The front paving should be done. That needs to be done. But it's not, again, it's not critical.
Can we ask P and P and D what they would identify as the highest priority?
Yeah, they're gonna do that.
That's like the seven thousand or something.
Yeah, it was like six thousand.
So that I didn't have in the budget.
Right, yeah, it was like fifty-seven hundred, I think. And he said it would prioritize.
That'll be great.
So that Garden Street.
Okay.
Like you said, we could, if we can, if we don't, can't take it up, we should really. But when you have to know to take it out this year if it's not in the budget, I mean, budget rate, we can still do it anytime this year, right? We don't have to decide tonight.
No, no, no. I'm just trying to plan for fund balancing, so we could prioritize capital projects between this year and putting them in the budget next year, what we wanna use the fund balance for. 'Cause the nineteen twenty budget will be approved on April twenty-third. So that's why I just wanna try and get an idea of what we're pushing off to next year.
Like what, you can, can you tap into the fund balance anytime? Doesn't have to be in the budget. If we don't budget for that for next year, and we wanna do it, we can pull it during the year? Or how would, how does that work?
You can pull from fund balance for emergencies, unplanned projects that, you know, need to be done. Not a dire emergency, but like should still be done. Or if your expenses go over revenue, which you should try not to do. So if we have any ideas, I'd rather put them in, and then we can always take them out. Even if we have very rough estimates, it just looks better, 'cause we're talking about it now, we know about it. So to not put the wall in, if we're gonna do the wall, wouldn't be responsible. But if we put in, you know, say five thousand, and it comes out to be seven thousand, at least we tried.
The wall's gonna be...
I know, it's gonna be crazy.
But it wouldn't be in the budget itself, you would have to identify it as, as a fund balance?
As a fund balance contribution.
So you just identify that at the beginning of the budget? Okay, it's not affecting the budget. Okay.
'Cause these projects, they're not coming out of like the general everyday money.
Right, okay. The other question on the, on, say the wall comes in at two hundred thousand or something, I don't know, I have no idea where it's coming in, and we wanted to do, and people would read on it, then would that be something we're bonding soon? Is that something that could be included in that, or no, or it would be banned for that?
If you wanna do a ban for it, we would have to know an exact, not exact, a good estimate now. The ban is purchased on May fifteenth, so the numbers have to be done by, say, April twentieth.
Yeah, so that's not gonna happen. Okay. And so, and when are we bonding? We said we were bonding or putting a bunch of bands together for the bond?
I'm waiting for the dam.
Oh.
I'd hate to pay thirty-five thousand dollars in bond fees twice, like one year after the other.
Okay.
Is there money in the sewer budget for the door?
For the...
Door?
That's part of their ban already. Money's been separated.
Okay, so that money's there. And is it charged as a line item in the budget?
No, because capital projects paid and out of the sewer ban money is separate. It doesn't come out of the sewer budget.
There's no way we can get a number on the wall?
I don't think so. I just got, we've got the, we got the finished, we're not gonna, it'll be really...
Not by, it would, by the twentieth would be very...
And in order, no, April twentieth is the finalizing the numbers. You have to put out notices besides a resolution, and a stoppage notice, something like that, posted for a certain amount of days in six locations. It's a lot to borrow in this short period of time.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that much.
So quickly then getting back, about a hundred fifty thousand, let's just call it a hundred for now. We just spent forty thousand of it. Does anybody else have any big projects that need to come out of this year's budget?
Did we take out for the architect for the wall? I think that was three thousand. Was that taken out somewhere?
Did they pay that?
I don't, I asked, I don't think we paid it, right?
No, okay.
The firehouse besides the floor, is there like walls that need to be redone, or I mean...
They should, they were there today doing, doing a run, a walkthrough, and I don't know when, I can ask if they can get us numbers quickly. But there was another things that weren't even sure of. They, they had identified then, but they might not be, you know, true. Like the front brick might be falling up. When our, when Jason was there, he didn't think that was the case. So that might just be, need to be repaired. There's the, the whole heating system, but I don't know what that'll cost or what's the element. And then the flooring and the front paving. Front paving's probably not that much.
Anybody else have any ideas? Can you mention maybe a recycling can?
Oh, if we could, if we could get a couple, at least one more of those, if people wanted to.
A double or a triple?
Probably a double, since who knows where recycling's even gonna go. I was wanting to get another one of those bins that we got for down the river and put out front here. So if we got one, it was like, what was that, twenty or two thousand?
I don't remember, I think like twenty-two hundred?
Somewhere in there. That's just the wish list item. The computer rack?
So right now I have the computer rack for thirty-five hundred in next year's budget, and I'm gonna pull it out and do it this year. Okay.
Can we get chairs for here? Or is that something you think we're gonna get on a... Is everyone happy with their chair? I'm not.
Chairs up here, chairs down here. Chairs up here.
Yes. Mine is, this thing's terrible. I mean, I'm the same height as Marie, and that's definitely... That's why I got rid of that chair.
I might mention that if we replace the chairs out here with something a little more comfortable, we might have some more citizen participation in our meetings.
I believe the chairs that are gonna go out there, if we replace them, have to be connected chairs.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I was talking to Kathy about it, because there's a possibility that they can get some grant money. They have to be attached, at least two or three across, especially I guess in court.
Prevent tossing at the judges.
Yeah, so nobody tosses them at us, and you know, so we're comfortable enough. I know they have some grant possibilities, but that comes out in the fall, so we would have to talk to Kathy and to Tom.
Yeah, court grants, it's just once a year, it's not told or...
We need to, so I will, I have it on my calendar to bring it up again with them in like June or July, to get some, either these chairs or those chairs or all of these.
What about dining terrace on the roof above?
First we need a roof.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
First we need a roof and then like some plants or the water cupid.
It's a crazy one.
Hot tub.
Other than that...
When would you have to add, if there was anything else we wanted to add or if there was...
For this year?
Yeah. Do you need it tonight?
No.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanna have an idea. I don't wanna spend that whole extra money, 'cause we don't know what's gonna happen if big truck breaks or something. But I'm comfortable enough that some of these big engineering projects, instead of keep kicking the can, use some this budget and some next.
The, the engineering for this, for the paving, can that be taken out of CHIPS?
I had, I called the Poughkeepsie office today and left a message to see what would qualify it for CHIPS. 'Cause I know some engineering can go into it, but I don't know if it has to be a specific type of engineering, if we have to actually do the project and not just, you know, get the engineering done without the actual paving.
I thought the stuff that Jason had sent over, I thought he said in there, he identified, what was CHIPS held today? I think most of it was.
Yeah, I think he looked at it.
He said they start what they've done for the municipalities.
I think that's it. If anybody wants to do some light reading over the next couple of days, feel free to ask questions. I can tell you the calculations I used for each line. Some lines I just carried the budget forward, but eighty percent of the lines I actually did a real calculation based off of an average or what I know was coming, utilities, three months left, four months left, like that. So that's some light reading. Big savings is gonna be in health insurance. Huge savings. When I had done the budget, I wasn't sure about the new clerk, if he was going to be taking health insurance. So I put in a family plan, and the same thing with the highway department. I wasn't sure with the turnover. So that's two family plans that were not used. And I also put in a ten percent increase, and what Nisha decided to do was only up the premiums by three percent and up the co-pays for their members. So that's why that fifty thousand dollar number on savings of health insurance is a true number. After that, we'll have a couple savings, a couple thousand storm drains, 'cause I think we're only gonna be able to do maybe like one big one this year. Unless we talk to the highway department, if they can get two, but I know he's looking at the one at the bottom of Maine.
Is that something that Bugsy talked about, having someone else do?
Bring a contractor in for that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's gonna have his hands full, so, and I think a contractor might, I would think if they, they would be able to do a better job.
Which one at the bottom of Maine?
This one right by Shepo.
It's on a curve somewhere.
It's on the north side, gotcha.
The cook come, wasn't it?
Cook was doing something here, but I didn't know Greg was aware of it.
No, Greg, it wasn't Greg, it was Bugsy. It was a Bugsy project.
Oh, Bugsy, oh, okay.
They were supposed to get underneath the tunnel and see how deep that thing was.
They're, we'd come back next week.
Did they get the lines on?
I think that's what they're coming back for.
Just a couple other lines of, they're really over or really under. Salaries for me is gonna be under, because of outperformance, obviously. So there's a savings there.
I think we should give it back to...
The attorney.
When you were out, didn't we, did we budget for someone?
We didn't budget, but she worked less hours at a significantly less rate. Attorney contractual, big savings, we just haven't been using counsel as much as we have in the past. They're also behind on their bills, so unless something huge comes up, I think that's gonna be a big savings.
We need them.
They're through December.
What's that?
We're only through December right now. CHIPS resurfacing, you'll see there's sixty-nine thousand unused, but on the same side, the revenue's not coming. That's a one for one, so that's a big number. I think that's it on a, on a, it's really big numbers. Obviously recycling, I've been moving money constantly into the budget, so it doesn't look like it's over, but it's over from the original, of where we started.
So the total, is there a projection of what will be over, the way the rates have gone up from, or for the last couple of years? Like from seventeen to eighteen, what was the difference, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. In rates or like overall expenses?
Overall expense, yeah, and the difference between year from year to year.
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Did we go from like forty to eighty?
It was about, when they first started charging us, it was thirty-eight dollars. And then it was in the forties, and then it went to fifties, sixties, and now it's, went from like sixty-five twelve, I think, up to eighty-one ninety-nine.
It was October two thousand seventeen, I think the first time we got charged.
I was just gonna say, we're showing a reimbursement, a revenue in the two thousand and eighteen nineteen budget. It's small, but...
Oh, that's twenty-nine dollars of scrap metal.
Ah, okay.
Michelle, just a fast question, it's more of a organization thing in the water budget. You've got the purification lab analysis, it seems to be in the wrong group of accounts. It's under the clothing and eye care, should that be, can that be moved?
You're on budget?
Water. No, it's on the one budget, it's just like the way you've got them divided and totaled off. Purification lab analysis account is in the same sub-area as the clothing and eye cares. It should be sort of up, it's on page three of the water budget. I don't wanna be picky, but it just sort of like rises here.
I could take a look at that, maybe one thirty?
That's cause it goes into numerical order.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know they, yeah, I know they go on numerical order, but I...
Well, I can't, I can put it on its own line, I can do, but I can't put it up somewhere.
Right, 'cause it does, 'cause it, okay. I think I, I think I was looking for a total or something, and I picked up that number and then realized it was four thousand dollars and we didn't do it.
Any other questions about a financial, or where we stand eighteen nineteen, what we wanna do good on eighteen nineteen through March? Just a side note, when you read this, this report's as of March twentieth. I didn't do it at the end of February. I did it in real time, so that we have the most accurate numbers for these discussions, but there is a lot of bills paid on March twelfth. Two other quick things about financial report, and then we'll dive back into the budget. So we had a FEMA audit done for our Sandy-related expenses for the West Street tram station that was fixed years ago. FEMA's very slow. New York State didn't find anything that they're gonna disallow. So the audit's substantially complete. The last thing is we submitted a letter on Friday to get like six hundred dollars extra for the work, for my hours for doing the audit with the state. They're willing at least to pay for it, so we submitted an extension request. Other than that, everything is okay, and they'll send us our remaining, like I think it's like eighteen thousand dollars. 'Cause they fronted us a lot of money for that. And the last thing is the EFC bond we've been talking about for the sewer projects. We're buying an emergency generator that we, after a lot of back and forth, we got it into the grant to be approved, so we'll get twenty-five percent back on, you know, the forty-three thousand dollars. Originally that was just gonna be, have to be financed, so now it's seventy-five percent financed, twenty-five, free money essentially. The state actually laughed at us, 'cause they didn't think that we were gonna be able to pull it off. And I pulled it, we pulled it off on March fifteenth, which was the last day. So we're going to be bonding four hundred and forty-five thousand. The total project was approved at eight sixty. Total projects coming in at five eighty-seven, with four forty-five being financed. So it's half of what we thought three years ago when we did this, so that's good news for the sewer fund.
One question on that, on the bonding, you're speaking of not spending thirty-five thousand or whatever, goes through the process. The other project Greg wanted to do down there, the de-watering or solidifying of waste, is that something we should wait and see what that'll cost, or, and include that in a bond, or no?
We can ban for that, and then we would include it in a bond. This EFC bond, we don't, of all the charges, because it's EFC, we pay less than five thousand dollars to do this. They cover and absorb most of the cost. If we do a bond on our own, that's when it's expensive. To ban, just be a couple hundred dollars for bond council and our financial advisor. So if we wanted to ban for it when we have a real number, we could look at that next year. Now, for budget, who has questions about the tentative budget? Anybody? Marie sent...
You answered them all.
Marie sent questions, I sent them back to her. I'll send everybody the answers. Couple things about fireman service, funds and fees. AIM, I put AIM back in, because it looks like we're going to get it one way or the other. Both Sue Serino and NICOM's guidance said, you know, you could put it in, because Cuomo will adopt before we adopt. So if we have to take it out, we can, but I think it's gonna be in there, but what do I know? For the water fund, for the budget, I made a miscalculation. So seventeen thousand dollars in social security or Medicare expenses were in there, that's Medicare, that's not really there. So I'm gonna reduce the fund balance contribution in the sewer fund by seventeen thousand. Last week, or two weeks ago, we didn't go over water and sewer in depth. Does anybody wanna do that? Or Brian and I spent some time with Greg going over it. Greg's pumped loads of numbers and the changes that we've made. I don't know if we wanna deep dive into it, or just leave it where it is.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good? So then it's just the general fund, capital projects. What are we gonna do next year now?
I figure we can't do this year.
They need numbers.
Can we just discuss that?
They need numbers.
No, no, no. I don't know what we have, I mean, it's the things we discuss.
But we just discussed like the engineering for Garden Street. Next year we probably will do Garden Street.
I would think we have to do Garden Street.
We'll probably do Fishkill. We've gotta get that.
I think Fishkill, this depends on the, where the numbers come in, you know, if they're where they were, or, I mean, he's projecting three hundred thousand.
For just for Fishkill?
Yeah, and for Garden it was a fat, a hundred thousand.
I thought it was one, like one sixty.
One sixty.
But he also said when he was here that he had added additional drainage in the middle of the street, that it's not gonna be there. He said he had added additional drainage in the middle of the street, that it's not there, and then if we don't want it there, I don't know what that's gonna do to change the numbers, how significant and not significant that would be.
I don't think there's a drainage problem on the street, if we're talking Garden Street. I don't think there's a drainage problem. And there are two catch bases, one on either the east side and the west side, on the north end.
But you know, even if Fishkill comes in at say, whatever, he said three hundred thousand, it sounds like a high, he said he's quoting us on it. If we pay for it with CHIPS and then bonds, we'll pay for it out of our own, so maybe we, we have a hundred thousand in CHIPS and a hundred thousand.
So I'm projecting that we'll have a hundred and sixty-nine thousand in CHIPS money? That's between CHIPS rollover, new money, pave New York, EWR, we just put back in the budget, but it's still preliminary. And if we do get that, only like seven thousand extra, so I'm not counting on that, so we have one sixty-nine. If we don't do any paving this year, we save it all for next year.
So if we do Garden, then we'll do Garden.
And we just see where the bid's coming, but yeah, we hope to do Garden.
Do...
And if we can't do the projects this year, or take it from fund balance for the fire company, I'd like to get the floor down and see where the heating system comes in. 'Cause I think the heating system's gonna be saving us in the long run, this, this monster, this heating oil right now. Again, I mean, everything can go on the way it is, but I mean, you could leave Garden if you want, or you can leave any of the streets.
You could leave Garden, and you, you could leave the fire company, the firehouse floor. The only thing that seems to me as a potential problem is the fire company, the firehouse facility. If it is really pulling away, then that's a safety problem.
Yeah, well, we're gonna identify those.
And we'll wait for them to...
I think there's things that have to be done that I don't, I don't see, just keep putting off, though. Although they're not, you know, it's not like an emergency to have the roads done. I mean, we should be keeping up with what we have, and we haven't done, we haven't had paved roads in two years, I think. I think the last time was when Chris took over.
Well, in that year we had a number of paving there.
We what?
There were, there were a number of streets paved that year.
Yeah, they were just paved over through Putnam County, with Golden Avenue and Wall Street.
Wall.
And Main, yeah.
And the one next to the bank. And Furnace, that was part of...
So, I don't think we want it. I think just like everything else, you want to keep up with things or budget for one. As you go along, just like we do with vehicles and not wait until in ten years when every one of them has to be done. Or if we don't start doing paving, maybe chips will say, well, you don't need that much and cut us because right now we have that much.
Yeah, so if we list three things for next year in the budget, Garden Street, Firehouse Floor, Firehouse Heating. And then we'll see what we have after that. Those are the three priorities.
All right. So, if the way the tentative budget is presented for next year without any fund balance contribution, it's, you know, two point, it's two point three. So, twenty-five percent would put us at, you know, five eighty. The fund balance, probably be about eight hundred after we do a couple of these projects, maybe let's say seven eighty. So, that gives us two hundred thousand dollars to play with next year. Very rough numbers and I can solidify them and send out an email. So, if we wanted to do the firehouse or Fishkill Avenue, I guess it depends on really what they come in at because there's the wall outstanding too. But if we use two hundred, it sounds like we can really only do the wall or Fish, the wall and the firehouse or Fishkill.
Well, Fishkill or Garden, I think.
I think we should just wait to see the numbers.
I think we should, Fishkill or Garden, whichever one we can cover with chips. And then like use our fund balance for things that we can't use chips money for.
Or have that discussion.
So, then I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to review the numbers over the next couple of days. And I'm going to look at putting two hundred thousand dollars as a fund balance contribution into next year's budget. And I'm going to put it under shared services municipal repairs. So, that, you know, because we're looking at doing something that's either for the residents or for the building, you know, it's infrastructure. And then that'll leave us open to what we want to do with it when the numbers come in. And the beauty of fund balance is if we don't use it, it goes right back in, but at least we're saying that we have a plan and we're going to use it. Is everyone okay with keeping twenty-five percent of the budget as a fund balance?
Yes.
I would be uncomfortable with getting us down to twenty-five percent of expenses as our fund balance. I think we need more breathing room than that, in my opinion.
What are you comfortable at? What would you be comfortable at?
What are we at now?
We're at six ninety-three, which from last year is seven.
Just out of curiosity, what's the anticipator, what catastrophe would happen that we would need to spend twenty-five percent of our budget on in one year?
I can't find the expense.
We're at about thirty percent now. I'm not sure.
Forty percent's ridiculous.
We're at thirty.
Thirty, oh, okay.
What were we at? I mean, we have, we've grown over the past couple of years. We have, we have comfortably been at twenty-five or so before that or not.
No, we've been above that. I believe we've been above that and I don't have any numbers in front of me, but I thought we had a very comfortable fund balance.
I think we were in the low thirties and then we did the firehouse first, so we're still at thirty now. I suppose we were at thirty-four, thirty-three before we did the firehouse first.
I'll split the difference with you, twenty-seven and a half.
I'm not splitting anything. I'm going with twenty-five.
Then I'm going with thirty.
Excellent people on the board. Anybody else have an opinion on that?
Twenty-five.
I'm comfortable with twenty-five because I think Michelle said between twenty and twenty-five is what they like to see us at.
The state will never give a number. They only use the word reasonable. But from literature that I've read, whether it's a state guideline, a NICOM guideline, it's twenty to twenty-five percent is comfortable. Anything, when the state does our fiscal stress report, twenty to twenty-five is one of the categories.
Lynn, didn't you hear your thoughts?
I'm, I'm fine with twenty-five.
So, that would be four to one. That's my math.
Record that.
Anything else about the budget?
I just, can I get the go-ahead on the, on having them do the engineering?
For Garden?
For Garden right away. Is everyone agreeing with that?
Yes.
It's going to hit into my thirty percent. No, I'm not. What are we talking about? Five thousand, six thousand?
I think it was about.
Engineering for Garden is thirteen thousand dollars?
I'll have to go back and look at the proposal.
Oh, he gave us.
And is that with the additional storm drains in the middle of the, of the street?
Yeah, which I think we should tell them.
I think that was all included. We can take that out if you really believe it's not. We could take it out before it even starts.
Have we been having problems?
I don't think so.
No. Yeah, I'll take that out.
The only flooding that occurs on Garden Street is when the backbrook overflows and goes into people's backyards.
Okay, I'm fine with taking it out. I didn't think there's a problem either. He was talking about deterioration, but I don't think that's the case of that going down. He also has some sidewalks in there and I don't kind of identify where they are.
I didn't think there were any sidewalk problems on Garden Street.
I think the two catch basins have to be done and asked to be old and repaid. I'll talk to him further on it.
And, and I think the problem with the east catch basin is that it is really down and wrong. Because you're coming down the hill and you're coming down the street. Where does, can I ask a question? Where does, where does the catch basin empty into?
We don't have.
I'm assuming it empties into the backbrook.
I don't think so, no. There is a pipe right there coming out of the other side of it north.
Yeah, but the, the backbrook comes underneath Northern Avenue behind, what's her name's house? And goes, and then goes into Spring Brook.
Okay. Anything else you need on the budget? Anything else from the board?
So, let's look at, it's I'm on. Going backwards, so budget's going to be adopted on the twenty-third. The public hearing is on April ninth. Do we need another discussion? I don't think so. I think we're in a pretty good spot.
You just answered your own question. I do think so. I agree.
My thing is all you can do is you send it to us.
Well, you, you may have some of the priorities and numbers that you can feed into, Michelle.
So, the only big change is going to be a fund balance contribution. And I have to adjust one of the highway accounts by seven hundred dollars. Other than that, I don't plan on making any changes. I'm going to work on the fund balance. I'm going to take a couple of days' break from the budget so I can look at it from start to finish again. Because as Marie caught, I made a typo or two because it reads the way I want it to read, not what it actually says. And then I'll email it out again before the public hearing. For the public hearing, do we, are we going to leave it open or are we going to open the public hearing and close it the same day?
I think we open and close it, depending on unless there's something.
We have to have it approved by that date, no?
The public hearing can be opened for up to five days.
But when can the budget approval date?
Has to be adopted on the twenty-third.
On the twenty-third.
Okay, so we have two days? So, what's the date of the hearing?
The ninth.
The ninth.
The ninth, okay.
Yeah, two weeks.
Got you.
Unless there's something major, I think we should close it.
Okay. And that's going to start at seven o'clock on the ninth. If anybody has any thoughts that pop up in the middle of the night, just send me an email and I'll try to answer it or work it into the budget if we need it to be. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks for coming.
Okay, next docking request from Hudson River Loop. They made their corrections on their dates, so they now, now work out. So, five eleven to five twelve, five eighteen to five twelve, six eight. I'll make a motion to.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. The second year in a row, they failed to use our docking application form. And that was supposed to be communicated back to them when we had the problem of dates. And apparently, they don't care. So.
They never filled one out?
No, they think this is the old form.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, we can send them one and tell them to fill it out.
I would prefer to do that.
So, can we approve?
Approve the dates but not the request. Or reserve the dates but not approve the request.
Make a motion to approve the request on the condition that they send in the appropriate document.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you're going to send in a note?
Sure.
We got Jeff. We need to. Next is authorize mayor to sign Jewel Community Power MOU and Electric Supply Agreement. This is also tables from last week to give people more of a heads up. So, it was advertised. If anyone in the audience here, besides of course Jewel, that has any comments on that? Okay, is there any further comments or anything from the board?
Well, maybe Jeff could bring us up to speed on exactly what the next, next processes are or something. If you'd like to add or whatever you'd like to do.
Yeah, you can stay right there. He can swing his camera around. If there's anyone else.
You look great, don't worry.
Thanks. Yeah, so I'm Jeff Demansky. It's good to see you all. I know you know I've been stocking the building here. I'm not with Jewel, I'm with Hudson Valley Energy, which is my own not for, no, it's okay, just for clarification. I'm the not-for-profit. That's the local organizer, the local resource within the communities. But working very closely with Jewel and we're excited, this would be, if the approval happens tonight, this would be the fourth of the six communities with the other, with Poughkeepsie and Fishkill, City of Poughkeepsie and the town of Fishkill to follow soon, we hope, with adoption of the MOU within, hopefully, within about a week's time. And then off we go to issue the RFP, which we are anticipating would be issued in the first week of April. If we get the approval by the third of April by Fishkill, which we hope is the last. And then I think it's about three weeks, three to four weeks, the time for the RFP to be in the field. And then we receive proposals and review them and hopefully find what we're looking for in the proposal, in a proposal. And then the program would start in earnest sometime in May at that point in time where there would be the issuance following the acceptance of a proposal. We start the opt-out period where there's a distribution of the opt-out letter to all eligible residents and small businesses within the communities. And then we have the minimum opt-out period. At the conclusion of the period, the program starts. And during that time, it's a very busy time for me, doing more education and outreach efforts to make sure that people are aware. We've had, I think you guys have seen, I'm not sure if Glenn shared an update, but we've had a very, very busy fall and winter in doing education outreach. And we've got some numbers back actually from some, some work that we did that showed that we've done a fairly good job of getting the word out to people. We've got great feedback, a lovely response to a petition we have on the HudsonValleyCommunityPower.com website. Over four hundred people have signed it in various communities, showing that they support the model of the approach we're taking. And so, that's where we're at and looking forward to going. And I thank you all for your patience. I know you guys have been waiting for this, this program to go, which we're really looking forward to it launching.
Specifically for the Cold Spring area, what's the outreach going to be? It sounds like it's a short amount of time left if everyone signs on. So, the opt-out and any other informational stuff, I'm not aware of what's been happening in the village itself.
Right, well, the letter is a significant portion that goes out. But so, to support the letter, we're going to schedule two public events that will likely take place, we'll do more than two. There'll be a minimum of two public education events where people can come that will advertise that these events will be taking place in the letter. And it'd be likely to be more than two, given the span of the locations. But there'll be two that'll be relatively convenient to this area, maybe one in Beacon.
So, it's not going to be specific for Cold Spring, we'll have to go to Beacon or?
No, we'll probably do one right down here in Cold Spring and Phillips Town as well, at least one.
I would hope that you would.
Yeah. So, there'll be the minimum of at least two events for that. And then other, you know, events that we would schedule at request, which we've been offering quite extensively to multiple stakeholder groups. And we imagine a lot more people will take us up on that. Once they see the opt-out letter, see the start of the program imminent, they'll be, they'll have more questions. There'll be more, a higher level of interest.
Jeff, we put out the RFP, what exactly are you asking for?
This is for the supply. So, it's app for suppliers to meet their price requirement and the fuel mix requirement that we, we agree we're looking for. And that's outlined in the documents that you've seen.
I mean, when we first started this, it was a question of do we want to go green, do we want to go low pricing? So, have we come to that balancing point yet and where are we at?
Well, there's definitely a request for a hundred percent clean product. And it's, and we'll see, there'll be the option for someone to offer an additional, not instead of, but there, there'll be a hundred percent clean option and possibly another option offered on the contract period set. That, that would be outlined in the request as well, probably a two or three-year contract period.
So, we're not asking for a low pricing, we're asking for?
We are looking for best price and that's part of the MOU requirement, is that it beats the twelve-month utility average of the previous twelve months. So, we're, we're asking for both, actually. We want to see kind of the win-win scenario where we get the hundred percent clean energy product at, at less than the utility price, which they had and continue to have in the second contract in Westchester. So, in both periods since May twenty sixteen, they've had that, that win-win scenario.
Because we're in New York, don't we get a shot at a lot of the hydro power for up north as well?
It's, that's likely to be in, in the proposals that come in, that hydro mix, because we are in New York. And the requirement that is now attached to CCAs, that the power be New York power, renewable power generation. It's very likely there'll be a significant portion will be hydro in New York.
When you sent out the letter, is it going to give us an idea of pricing? You know, we expect the price to come in at X versus your twelve-year average.
When the letter, when the opt-out letter goes in, we have the price. The proposals, and then the proposals are in and we review them and we accept one, if it meets the criteria that we're looking for. And at that point in time, we outline that in detail, specifically the letter that goes out.
With the additional communities now that we've added, get the town of Poughkeepsie and.
Marlottown, yes, Mississippi Poughkeepsie.
How many people are we talking about now in the CCA?
I always think in terms of households. I'm sorry, I was thinking about meters and households, but that brings us to about thirty to thirty-five thousand households. And so, you can do the multiplication of the typical household population and play seventy to.
So, it grew quite a bit.
It's an additional, with City of Poughkeepsie, about twelve thousand additional household, with Marlottown, it's about twenty-five hundred additional households.
How many were in Westchester? That was your first.
Hundred thousand households.
So, we're still scrolling that.
But we're in a really nice spot because I heard from Glenn and their experience that when you get up towards that hundred thousand, it starts to be a little bit, the, the proposers are a little risk averse with a, with a CCA of that size. So, we're really in a good spot.
Thank you. And then we've heard back from you, John. Did John get back to you on this?
Yes, well, last week. He had no problem with any of the, with the agreement, the MOU or the supply agreement. But it's also, it's, you know, it'd already been reviewed by the attorney for Phillips Town and Beacon, so, you know.
Anything else from the board? Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize, well, somebody else has to.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Mayor Brandy to sign the MOU and Electricity Supply Agreement with Jewel Community Power.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
You got any questions for us? I didn't even ask you.
Nope. Thank you.
All right.
That's always good.
Next is, let's see, request purchase of Village Home Property fifteen Main Street. Hello?
So, do you have the site time?
No, I'm sorry.
Just get ready.
I've got this, I'm going to get this. This is the one you looked at.
Just to give ourselves a little more breathing room, I was wondering if we could, we said we could. Just to give ourselves a little more breathing room, I was wondering if we could, we said we could four, seven foot four and match with the property. Just in case, you know, something...
Say seven, two and three eight, she wants to go seven foot.
Yeah, can we just seven foot four?
This is the, this is the paper we looked at last week.
Right, we don't have any elevations from the front of the building and what this is gonna look like? Even conceptual?
Well, we, we wanted to get Historic Review Board approval before we released that information, but...
You're planning to raise the building two feet, is that correct?
No, we're building the floor inside two feet, so that we're trying to mitigate the flood.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not raising the building at all.
Okay, so the, tell us about the, what, what you're saying here is that you're going to have a raised, covered porch for outdoor seating for the cafe. How raised will that porch be?
The porch would be twenty-four inches above the grade.
Okay, and currently, the entrance to the building is significantly less than twenty-four inches.
Right, so we're building up a concrete floor, insulated concrete floor, and then doing a knee wall to mitigate the flood.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so the, the, the covered porch will be elevated by twenty-four inches from the current sidewalk grade. Current sidewalk grade.
Correct, the floor of the porch will be...
Three steps?
Yes, roughly, yeah.
So let me just, um, so you're basically here to ask if you could buy that piece, right? You have no approval from anybody to do anything with it.
Correct, we tried to go to the planning board, and they said just, it would be much simpler in the review process if we just get, if we just purchased the sidewalk. And what, you know, the roof line, currently what we're showing is a, you know, twenty-four inch porch level, and then a roof line extending above that, because if we add anything to that facade that is quirky, it's just architecturally, it looks terrible. So as far as what we're proposing for, you know, the property line, the roof line will continue out, you know, to cover that what we're...
You do have drawings?
Yes, we do have elevations, um, that we thought they were...
I would like to see the elevations, to see what we're actually agreeing to here, because it's not just a property, it's gonna be a deck.
You see, this is what I...
And with roof or whatever, I have no idea what it's gonna look like.
This is what I was trying to figure out today with, with Jeff. First of all, this totally confused me, because there's all kinds of side yards and front yards and rear yards that really don't exist in this property.
It's, it's almost built to the lot line.
Right, yeah, so I don't know, so these things are...
I, I get, well, I, I just wanna, look, last week we got into backyard sets, and that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the front piece of property, and that's what we're concentrating on, we're not gonna talk about side setbacks or rear setbacks. These are all zoning or planning questions. What's there, the question in front of us is, do we wanna sell this property? So let's, let's keep it to that.
If we say we wanna sell it, we're not approving, raising it or anything else, we're just saying you can buy it, and then...
Yeah, we're not, we're not raising the building, we're just keeping the same requirement.
I'm talking about two feet, as you just said, that you're gonna...
Yes, they're gonna put it down.
We're not approving you, we're not allowing you to do the deck, we're just saying you can buy it, and then you have to go to other boards to do all that other kind of stuff.
Right, that, I thought that the, the boards, other boards have the job to review that with us.
But we also have, if, you know, and I think the consideration is, we, we'd like to see what is actually gonna be there and what that's gonna look like, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be there, it's gonna be right at the sidewalk edge, and I think from a, you know, I'm concerned on what that'll look like, it's not gonna be that.
Well, I guess, I mean, that's a good point, if, if you're not happy with it, then our client are not allowed to buy the sidewalk, and therefore it saves her money. I guess that's a good way to look at it.
I would, I would just like to see it, I'm not saying I'm denying it, but I have no idea what, where, you know, I can see the footprint of it, but I can't see, you know, what's there, or the railing, or, you know, even an idea of a railing, or what's gonna be right there.
Well, it's also just twenty-four inches up, so it's three, three risers from the sidewalk.
I understand that.
Are the risers out into the sidewalk now, or would that be under the roof?
No, our jury shows the, the riser being inside of the property, the, you know, extended property line. So what I'm, what I'm thinking is, um, I mean, the neighbor, you know, right next to the neighbor has an higher stoop.
Which next to the neighbor?
From the house?
From the, yeah, but that's a, that's a house. On the other side, you have a business that has no stoop.
And then, and on this, there's a carport, but is that going through the deck, or is that gonna be like a drawbridge? I don't, what's that?
They're, they're asking, as part of what they wanna do, they wanna put in a new curb cut and a driveway. They wanna remove the tree that's currently there, but I don't know.
It's already there, that carport.
Pardon me?
The carport's already there.
Well, you could call it a carport, I guess.
Okay, sorry, I was looking at the wrong...
The opening.
Julie, the dimensions of the, of the purchase that you're wishing for is different on the two...
Yes, that, that's my mistake, I, I didn't catch that before we went out, and I, because I had relied on our staff, who has some experience, to make that coordinate, but unfortunately, it was not. And so when I look at this on my second thought, I would like to ask for seven foot four minimum, so that, you know, it gives a little bit of tolerance, you know, so that if we're trying to build a seven foot three deck, I would like to ask for seven foot four.
What's the remaining sidewalk width, if you go with a seven foot four inch on the purchase?
That was my question, like, four inches?
No, no, it's, it's a decent size, I was over there, and so it's...
Yeah, I will have to measure that for you.
I guess we'll go about where, I'll just, you know, this is...
That would certainly influence me. The, the other structures, the, the Lusk House protrudes, but it's also significantly elevated, and the railings are significantly higher than a person's shoulder. Whereas this would be a, hit, hit a person in the chest, the, if the roof overhang is, is more than an inch, there's gonna be, are you gonna be putting in...
Is the roof coming off the upper roof, or is there gonna be a lower porch-type roof?
It's coming off the upper roof.
So it's gonna be considerably higher.
It's gonna be higher, yeah.
And your, your piece that you wanna purchase, how much wider are, is it wider than the sort of flagstone that the Argentine restaurant next to you has?
Uh, I'll take photos.
They have brick, it's all brick.
Well, yeah, is it the same width as the brick that's there?
Yours comes right out to the sidewalk.
Right. Yeah, so I'm thinking it's about the same.
Yeah, I'll take some photos.
One thing I'm not seeing here is, how does a handicapped person get in?
That's what we're talking to building inspector about, um, uh, because that, either we lose, so either we purchase a sidewalk to do the ADA ramp here, or we do the ADA, ADA ramp to the side, um, but it, it negates the carport. I mean, so we have to negotiate between all the departments.
But that's a requirement, that you have a carport, you have to...
I know, that's the thing.
Off-street parking for two cars, because of the apartment.
We're stuck between rock and a hard place, because it's a tight site.
And, and you're eliminating parking space to begin with, from, from our street.
The curb street, yeah, I mean, the curb cut.
Right.
And so the planning, uh, so, I mean, sorry, let me take a step back. So either we do one of the ramps, or we get an, because it's a small establishment, a small footprint, not too many people, maybe we do an assisted lift, you know, like assisted access, so that somebody, like, has a bell and...
Right, right.
Yeah, so that, that was the third solution that, that we were talking about. And to have a nice pleasant streetscape, we would love to propose, you know, covered porch, instead of being just taken up by a ramp.
It was my understanding, I knew it, um, that the assisted entry and egress was an accommodation for old buildings, not for new construction.
But we're not taking down the old building, we're trying to work with it.
No, I know, but this is new construction here, this would, you, you know, if you bought, if you bought the stoop, this would, this twenty-four inch deck would be new construction technically.
But we have very limited space. It's, I mean, the building itself is existing, so to, to provide access to an existing building, um, but the building, so anyway, so we'll, we'll continue to have a conversation with the building inspector, but that was, that was our, um, discussion with him, you know, can we do an assisted entry?
Okay, and the only way for the public to get in or out is this one door?
Uh, yes, yeah, and under seventy-five occupants, one egress is fine for, for that kind of occupancy.
I, I would like to see the front elevation, make my decision, unless everyone else is fine with it, um...
No, I, I...
The front elevation could change, though, I mean, it, it could change depending on what the Historic Review Board says. So that, to me, is still a moving target.
When are you, when are you in front of the HDRB?
After his, after planning board, so the planning board has to...
So if there wasn't a deck there, is the face of it going to be changed, if we didn't allow you purchasing it?
It would definitely impact it, I mean, we'll have to figure out a different design solution.
They wouldn't be able to get into the building.
I, I would like to see what you have proposed, regardless, I mean, anything can change, so I...
If we don't, uh, if there's no deck there, do you still wanna buy that piece of property?
Uh, probably not, I, I have to ask the owner.
Yeah, yeah, have some stair mechanism to get into the floor of the building, which is going to be, the floor is going to be raised two feet, so you've gotta get up there somewhere, somewhere.
We'll have to do it on the side, and...
In a carport?
Yeah, I mean, we will have to lose one or the other.
But if you do it in the carport, you're eliminating the ability to use a carport for car or...
But the village gets to keep the sidewalk parking, so that's, you know, that's...
But you couldn't have a side, you couldn't have stairs going into a, a driveway, or you wouldn't fit the car.
If you have an apartment above, you have to provide two off-street parking spaces.
Okay, there's no above, it's just all on, on ground floor.
Yeah, it's all the one floor.
I'm sorry, I was under the impression that there was an apartment on the second floor.
But that's again, not our, I think it still needs to, but I, that's not our concern.
No, no, but...
Last week, we thought that you were going to put a second floor in the building, you're not gonna raise the...
No second floor.
Okay, so the back pod is gonna be the apartment?
Yes.
Did, I mean, I, I don't know, can we, can we approve allowing them to buy the sidewalk if they need to, after they go through all the, you know, all the rest of the...
They need, we need to make an approval for them to move ahead. So I, I just want, I wanna see if, whatever you have as an elevation, uh, before I, I vote on it, I mean, I would just like to see what the conceptual is of what a deck would look like, or the railings on it, and, you know, basically where the roof line would be and how that hangs over it.
But in my opinion, I mean, that needs to be discussed with the Historic Review Board, so I feel like we're going circles.
Then I'll vote no tonight. Does anyone else, I mean, if it's, it's conditioned on, on that, I mean, I would like to see that before I move ahead. So if we can't, and you're saying that that's not possible, then I would have to vote no, if you need an answer.
I'm not saying it's not possible, I feel like you're attacking me for something that's going to change, I don't understand the animosity.
There is no animosity, I'm asking you if we could have a front elevation, and you seem to be not wanting to produce that.
No, I mean, we, we feel like that could change...
Do you have, do you have an elevation now that you're, that you're going to the boards with? And if you do, then why couldn't we see that, so we have a conceptual idea of what this may look like? Because right now, you're going to the boards with a conceptual, right?
To the Historic Review Board, I mean, I feel like we should have a dialogue, I feel like we're, okay, so then, I would, I would prefer to not lose time and get Historic Review Board approval first, and then bring you something that is workable with them. Otherwise, I feel like I bring you something and then get shut down first, before we even have a conversation with the Historic Review Board. I feel like we're going out, out of sequence.
But if you don't have, or if, if we don't agree on this, then, you know, if you go through all the process and go through final drawings, or have, you know, finalize a, 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 a design which they approve, and then you come back to us and we say no, then you're gonna have to redesign that all over, and that doesn't seem an efficient way to use time either.
Julie, are you going to the planning board now?
They suggest, I mean, they said we can get planning board approval without the side, front side, sidewalk purchase.
Okay.
The only thing is then, if we don't have that, then we would have to go back to them after we purchase it, and then refile our site plan with them. And so they thought it was, it was extra work on our part, and I'm trying to save our client money, and so that's why, that's why we came here. So, um, I mean, I'll, I'll ask the owner what, what she would like to do, because I feel like the, the, yes, we have conceptual porch design, but I feel like it's just so open for discussion, you know, with Historic Review Board, it could be totally different. So if, if what we have is, is very, you know, ephemeral at the moment, and to, to bring that, I just feel like it's going backwards, but...
At this point, you don't have, you don't have the approval to take the tree down either.
Correct, I have, we have, I believe, tomorrow is the first conversation with the tree committee.
You have, there's a public hearing for that coming up, I believe?
On the third, but that's someone else's project.
It's at fifteen, I thought it said fifteen market, it was in the PCNR.
I thought Jeff said you have a public hearing on that tree removal coming up, so I don't...
Yeah, not, not that we know of. Jeff, the last email that I got from Jennifer is that it's too soon to put us on the public hearing.
Can you call Jeff tomorrow and check, 'cause I, I could've sworn today he told me that there was a public hearing about that.
All right, so the comments are...
Doug, do you remember when, it was in the paper last week, in the classified ads, the tree advisory board had a public notice? Do you remember what the address was?
I would consider...
No, I, I mean, we could have fifteen, I just thought you might remember. I thought it was fifteenth May.
Fifteenth May.
It is...
At least, at least on the front page of the Village website, excuse me.
It's a public meeting, it doesn't say public hearing.
Okay, sorry, public hearing.
Yeah, we didn't even choose what kind of tree we will be replacing it with, you know, um...
It's, it's a public meeting, thank you, Frank.
Excuse me.
It's safe to say that the village is, is okay with selling this piece of property, shouldn't it?
No, no.
I don't mean now, I mean the concept of it, 'cause we sell sidewalks.
No, we don't, to the best, no, to the best of my knowledge, we've never sold a sidewalk, we've sold stoops.
That, that's what this would be, we're not selling sidewalks, wouldn't this be the equivalent of a stoop? That's what I'm confused about here.
This isn't a stoop right now, it's, it's, it's at grade with the sidewalk.
Right, so my question is, are we, are we talking about selling a portion of, are we talking about selling a portion of the walkway here?
No, no, we're talking about what's in front of, it's like, it's ground level right now, it's a brick patio.
What would be a stupid other place, yeah, I'm familiar with the building, but I just wasn't sure, like, what we were talking about.
Julie, I would like to know what the dimensions of the remaining sidewalk are after the seven foot four.
Yeah, I'm interested in that, too.
And that would be just the concrete sidewalk, not the grass strip?
Well, the concrete sidewalk's five feet, I measured it, so...
Okay, do, do, do you know what the depth of the brick is?
I thought it was seven, eight, but I could be wrong.
Okay, remaining sidewalk depth, and I will ask our client if she's, you know, willing to show the elevation, which, you know, in, anyway, so it's, um...
Does anyone, I mean, Stevie, do you wanna, would you like to see the elevation?
I absolutely would, I would not approve that.
I don't, I don't wanna feel like I'm, I'm the only person, and you feel like there's animosity going.
You can, you can feel that way, we feel that.
I don't want to, it's a concern I have, which I...
Well, my concern on top of that is, is us approving this, is, is like, kinda like saying we approve what, what you're gonna do. Even though that's not how it works, but I mean, it kinda...
We can purchase the sidewalk and the proposed design get, does not get approved, we won't build it. I mean, it's not like we're gonna go and build it with something that doesn't...
Yeah, but us doing, if, if you take that in front of the other board, saying, well, uh, the, the village has sold us the property, so that makes it, that lends some legitimacy to your, to your point that, that we're okay, you should do that, you know?
How about this, how about, how about, you know, the, the sale of, well, I was gonna say, sale of the sidewalk is pending on the Historic Review Board approval.
No.
No. We...
Well, I would, I would need to feel confident that the planning board was okay with it, too. Because entrance and egress looks really problematic for a cafe. And, and especially if the front deck is twenty-four inches off the ground, I see it very difficult to be ADA compliant.
Well, it might not have to be ADA compliant, I see, so, I mean, if it's ADA assisted, they can do that. That's how Jimmy used to be, and that's how a number of places are. That's how Jimmy used to be, and that's how a number of places are, if you, I don't know if that is for new construction, but they, I think they can, you know, work with what they have.
I'm trying to separate what we need to approve versus what the boards need to approve, and I think we've done this once before, where we gave someone a letter, it might have been James, and I'm not sure. We gave someone a letter that said we would, we are okay with you buying the property, and then when you do your plans, you know, I mean, we're not saying we're okay with anything other than the fact that you now own that strip, but we're not approving you to put a deck, to raise anything, to do anything else, we're just saying.
They would have to go through all the reports.
If you get to that point, we're saying now, yes, you can buy the property if you get to the point that you need. Um, we're not saying you can do anything else with it, if you get to that point and all the other boards don't want you to do what you want to do, then you say to us, I go, I want the property, that's fine, but I think that, I think that's what you're looking for, is just us to say, yes, you're okay to buy the property, not anything else, I, you know, I mean, I mean, you could own the property and never do anything, you know, it's yours, and you don't have to actually put the money across until the plans are done and everybody approves it.
Oh, no, I wouldn't agree with that.
Well, we have given somebody a letter previously, a couple of years back, that say that we're, we're, and I, I have to go back and find it, that we're okay with the idea that you.
The intent.
The intent, right, the intent of you purchasing the property.
I would think we had something more than, I don't, I can't recall any of that.
I, yeah, I have to go back and find it.
There's only one other one that we purchased land, and that was for Jimmy's and James's.
Yeah, and I think that might, which we were very grateful for.
And that was, that was.
But that was land that nut was not going to, the only thing, what you're going to put on that land where the stuff's going into the.
Yeah, we needed to connect that.
Julie, the, the diagram says, says that the new wood decking is going to be eighteen inches above the sidewalk, and I thought you had said it was going to be twenty-four inches above the sidewalk.
My apologies, you know.
It's on the top right, second, second statement.
At one point, our client asked for twenty-four in, we were trying for eighteen inches, and then our client changed her mind and she asked for twenty-four, and I apologize that, that did not.
Because it, it shows six, oh, six, six feet by four, four inches, gotcha, four risers, right.
Four risers, showing, showing four risers, yeah.
And that would accommodate eighteen inches.
Six inches, two feet, you know, each riser being six inches is twenty-four inches.
Yeah, okay, twenty-four, so that needs to be, sorry.
No, 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 I'm just mad at my staff.
You want me to come work for you, I can be a lot more detailed than this person. I'm joking, I'm joking.
I'm just mad because I, I tried to delegate, and I, it's my fault for not checking before I went out.
So it is twenty-five, twenty-four.
Yes, twenty-four. Um, so what we need is dimension of the remaining sidewalk that if we go with seven foot four, let's say, or whatever, is that we're proposing to purchase, and then elevations of what we're proposing, and then photos of the area, like, to show what, what the neighbor, the context is, and then the tree committee separate, and A D A compliant, what are we required to do? We, we started our conversation with building inspector, but I don't know what the final outcome is on that.
And the porch roof, the porch roof is sloped down to the north?
No, it's part, it's part of the main roof.
Same, following the same line as the.
Oh, so that, the current roof is going to be extended above the, the porch?
Yes.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Oh, where does it say that in?
It doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't say that.
We thought we were just asking to purchase the sidewalk, we didn't know that we had to give it.
One of the questions with the sidewalk is if people are walking in front of the, the structure, and if the sidewalk were sloped down toward the north, then they would have water flowing on that, but if it's.
We can always put a gutter, but, I mean, that's, so when we look at this.
If it's like that, it's not a good issue.
Yeah, the, the, putting on a, your standard porch roof, you know, going this way, we can always put a gutter, but it, it, it's such a tiny building that trying to put that going across, it didn't look great. It did not look great, and so we tried something, you know, different. So I, I personally don't mind showing elevations of what we're proposing, I just don't want this to be like a long-winded way of, you know, historic review board saying, no, and then we gotta come back and then.
If you get us that elevation, so this week, we put it on the agenda next week, and we either approve or disapprove.
But if you disapprove because you don't like the design, but we haven't had a chance to.
Well, it wouldn't be the design, I'm, I'm not, I just want to get the feel of it, not like if the railing's going to be metal, or if it's going to be a two-by-four, or it's going to be spindles or whatever, I want to get a feel of what this is going to look like in that spot.
Well, so how it's going to impact the walkway.
And, and the roof, and how the roof's going to look coming out that far, and, you know.
It's not a, I mean, everything on that street requires a variance, but does, does that add more, adding that building on, does that send it back to, do they have to get another variance because you're going to add the extra seven feet or whatever that you want to the building? I mean, everything down there, is it, you're, you're not automatically grandfathered into that.
I mean, if you put, I guess this question is, if you put that deck on, does that then trigger a review by Z B A?
Again, because of the.
Because there's, there's.
You're well into the, you're well into the building.
Your coverage is ninety percent, so I wouldn't worry about that, but you're, you're not, the, the side backs would be the setbacks, the side yard setbacks would be the thing that the Z B A would look at, I would think, but it would be just on the east side of the building, the west side of the building, you've got a template setback.
Where?
In, in the porch.
Yes, I mean, I agree, I agree, I mean, I, I understand your concerns, and, and our, our client is trying to give a little bit of transition from, you know, sidewalk to the building, and, and so, and it's a, it's a, you know, high flood zone, and so we're trying to accommodate with a higher platform, so.
My wife's yoga studio was in that building for many years, and the water was up to my knees in there, that's how bad it flooded last time.
Right, right, and we're trying to mitigate that.
Inside, not outside.
Yeah, that's.
For some reason, that building is really plunked, prompted.
Well, the next door, I mean, the one.
Well, all of them.
Either next door or some.
That one's low lying for some reason.
Pedal house, they used to pump it out for weeks of the floods.
Okay, so if we can move along, and if you can, if you can get us those few things, we'll, we'll just discuss it and make a decision next Tuesday.
Okay, but then, okay, so then my thinking is, what if you say no based on what we propose, then can we propose something to the historic review board that is more accommodating and come back and propose to purchase the sidewalk, like, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
I think the, if I could try to answer that, I think the, the answer to that would depend upon what objections the board had to what you're going to show us next week, you'll get a better sense from.
Maybe we do a workshop with them.
That would give you a sense of what, whether we're objecting to form or mass or color, you know we're not objecting, but what the objection is, and then when you go to the H D R B, you'll have a sense of whether or not it is, it is reasonable to expect that if you come back, you'll get a different answer.
Right.
Does that help?
Yes, or should I just do a workshop with historic review board and come back to you, maybe that's.
I think the more expedient thing to do is just to come back to us next Tuesday.
Yeah.
All right.
There's no H D R B meeting tomorrow night, so you're not missing that, that's been canceled, right?
I saw that, yeah.
So just, just come back next Tuesday night.
Okay, all right, so, so I'm sorry, so if I caught that correctly, so if, so I, we come back with the elevations as we have right now, which, and then I, and then if you say no.
We will tell you why we say, if we say no, we'll articulate our reasons for saying no. You'll take that, you'll go back to your client to determine what your client wants to do, if the client wants to go forward to the H D R B with a different design and no, no, no purchase of any additional property in the front, that's one way to go. If your client says no, I want to go back and, and propose a different design in the front that maybe they'll accept, um, then we could do that.
Come back, okay, all right.
So what you need for next week are the elevations, the measurements for the sidewalk, anything else?
Yeah, photos of the area, and then A D A, what, you know, what are we, they're doing with the A D A, and then we'll also find out if, if this triggers the zoning, like, we'll try to.
That, that's up to, that, we don't care.
You don't care about that?
You might want to know that.
Yeah, you, you, you need to know that, but it doesn't enter, I don't think it enters into our decision.
No.
Okay, okay, well, that's good to know, okay.
Okay, next, I'm going to table the dockside once again, and I just talked to Johnny, called at the very end of the day, said he had another, he could simplify and, and pretty much make the, you know, Stephanie was a bit wordy or whatever, I think it included everything, but he said there was another way to link it in, and everything would be, you know, based on or referred back to the whole, the entire document, and you can, you know, basically make sure that the, the village was, you know.
Covered.
Was that?
Covered.
Yeah, covered, and so, we'll see what he has, he said he had done one for Woodbury, we'll see what that is, so that'll leave, move that off. Next is request to remove fence on property on thirty-three Parrot, I, I haven't talked to them, and, and really, I, I need to kind of table that and talk to them, I mean, if it's just removing the fence, I think that's one thing, it's like, then it's, they, I think they would need a plan to show us what they're going to do and whether, you know, I mean, because they're basically taking down, well, for Cynthia, and the roses would be safe, is there on one end?
I don't care.
Anyway, and that's toward the top of the hill.
Yeah, it is, it's very much, it's.
So it goes flat and then it dives, so that's why they want to use our property, so that they can plant or do whatever it would be easier to do on that level.
I would, I went to take a look at it, it seems to me that the fence there is actually a safety measure to prevent people from falling down the slope, it's a, it's a steep slope.
I don't know, but, well, it depends on what they want to put back in, they don't want to just take it out and not put anything back in, they might either want to do another fence or, or different shrubs, that's my understanding.
Ah, okay.
So that's why I need, they don't want to leave it there, you know.
Well, I thought that the proposal was just to remove the chain like this.
No, what they want to do, it's to remove that because it's on our property, and then to replace it with either a fence they had mentioned, and they didn't, we didn't get really into it, or shrubs of a different kind, so.
So.
They didn't want to like take everything down there and just have a, you know, going into the backyard, I think they probably want to put something that's going to give them more privacy.
Yeah.
Which may be.
Using more property to give themselves more privacy.
Exactly, but it's like, I will, I will follow up, I, I, I don't think they called and requested this, I think it was from a, the.
And I saw Becca over the weekend, I could have talked to her about it.
Right.
Sorry about that.
Next, unless you're afraid of coming up in front of us now, because.
Me? Afraid?
That's right, you're well seasoned, sorry.
Does everybody know Sue Costigan?
Hi, Sue Costigan.
I'm a big fan of Badger Gilco.
Okay, so the request is to buy the sidewalk in front, and the reason I think, believe is because H D R B wants you to have, have stairs there or a stoop there to, for a front entrance, whether it's being used as a front entrance or not, it's another story, but that's the request, is that right?
That's right.
Or anything you want to add to that, please do.
Well, I.
Probably simplifying a little too much.
I guess I simplified by requesting to buy the whole area in front of the lot, just considering that I'm going to need to, a transition in the driveway, a transition to the walkway, the stoop to get into the building, which is a little bigger than I thought it would have to be, but it's all because of the building code and stepping down onto slopes and whatnot. And then I intend to plant there, you know, just to bring some green to the front of the building, so I thought, well, I'm investing a lot here, should it just, should I just offer to purchase that whole dirt strip instead of breaking it up into small, small rectangles? But I don't, I don't know how you feel or how you deal with these things, or.
Well, my feeling is, I mean, I, I, I'm fine with selling it, you know, we have all the joints here and everything, it's been approved, I, you know, I wouldn't break it up into pieces anyway, I don't think that's the way to go, and I don't think that's, I think the main cost, I think it's a couple thousand for an attorney, for the closing.
Yeah, we did talk about that, and that was another reason I thought, all right, if I'm paying for attorneys in a survey, why am I doing it for a stoop, why am I not just?
Because the cost is only, it's minimal for the property itself.
When we discussed this briefly last week, one of the things I said, I would much prefer selling you the whole piece than to cut it into little sections.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know what.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't see your, you know, you own this piece, we own this piece, you, you know, rather, this is your property, buy the whole piece, I'm, I'm fine with that.
So if I read this correctly, the existing slate pad in front of Jimmy's is.
You know, that picture, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It, it does not seem to line up with the property line.
On this picture, it doesn't seem to, but, and this is probably coming from the survey we have done, but when I was out there, it looked like the slate pad does line up with the property line, so I, I'm not sure why that, unless maybe that changed at one point or.
And I think also a point is that when the building that was torn down, they had a covered porch on the left side that was on village property, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So the sidewalk's beautiful.
Oh, I'm thrilled with it, there, Jimmy Carrance made a beautiful design, and Garrison Woods is really killing it. I'm really hoping for June, but it's kind of like, I can see the end, but I'm not sure how to get there, you know, so, but everybody's working, working hard.
It looks really nice.
What we would need to affect the sale, are there needs and bounds?
Okay, I spoke to Glenn Watson Monday night or Sunday night, just because I wasn't sure, you know, I thought he might have experience, so he's poised and ready to go, and I talked to Luke Hilpert, who would act as my attorney, so I'm sort of eager to see how quickly we could do this, just because my concrete contractor, who is also my husband.
Your husband, yeah.
Is ready to go in mid to late April, so we just would hope to get him there at one time, and I don't know how fast these things can happen.
I think they can happen really quickly, if we have, if you have a measure, or Glenn has stuff, I don't think it's going to take long, it'll probably evoke a title search or some sort, I don't know what else is involved.
I guess Luke and your attorney will know the steps to take, and I'm sure Glenn does it in his sleep, so.
So can I make a motion?
Yes, she should pardon.
I made the motion to sell to Sue Costigan the area in front of her property at one twenty-six Main Street. Sue is offered to, Sue will provide us with the meets and bounds, which are necessary to begin the contract specifications.
I will, I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're on. Thank you.
I think you might, you might have to put an escrow in, do you have to?
Yes.
I already have one set up for the secret, but do I do a second one for this, or?
Call Jeff tomorrow and find out.
If we can accommodate, we will.
Okay. See, I'm not going to be afraid.
And the place that's like, probably nice.
I'm thrilled with it, I'm glad you're happy with it.
Nothing not to be happy with, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Uh, discussion order in sewer assessments for the Friendship Center, Marie, this is all you.
So, we're preparing to send out the order of sewer bills for the first quarter of two thousand nineteen. As it turns out, there was no evaluation of the number of water units and sewer units for the senior center, the Friendship Center, at the Old Lady Pavilion. I was under the impression, decidedly so, that there would be one sewer and water bill that would be sent to the owner of the structure, the entire structure, but that's not the case. There will be separate order and sewer bills for the United States Postal Service, the Friendship Center, and then the three suites of offices, okay, so for the, for the Friendship Center, I visited, so Badger meters are already.
Well, you were up there getting lunch?
Yes.
Did you pay your two dollars and fifty cents?
Two dollars and fifty cents, well, I had a good meal, the Badger meters have already been installed for all of five separate units. I visited the.
When they're installed, are they turned on, or they're just installed, and then they have to be activated?
I believe, I believe they're turned on, I believe that there's no water being used for one or two of them. The postal service, the suite of wire's offices and Friendship Center are active. I visited the Friendship Center and spoke with Michael Callahan, Count.
Cunningham.
What, who's it?
Cunningham.
Cunningham, thank you, Doug Cunningham, that's what's ringing home. The water, code one thirty in the village code.
The water, code one thirty in the village code discusses water rents. And it, it identifies the board, and when it refers to the board, it refer, it's referring to the Board of Water Commissioners, of which the Board of Trustees is the Board of Water Commissioners. The building type would be categorized as a special assessment building. And we establish the number of water rents based upon a simple resolution of this group. I went through the building as best I could. There is, there are five restrooms and one kitchen in the building. And so my recommendation, which is up to the board to accept or reject, the number of water rent should be six, based on one, one water rent per unit, per restroom, and one water rent unit for the kitchen. By comparison, we establish the water rents for gra, the ground floor of building number two, based upon one full water unit for each restroom, and one water unit for every four sink-only installations. Now, sink-only installations for building two is a little different. Sink-only installations would be the washing stations in the exam rooms. Whereas here, the only, the sink-only installation is the kitchen. There, there is currently no dishwasher, and that wasn't, it was not expressed to me that there are any plans for dishwasher. So my recommendation for the establishment of water rents for the senior, for the Friendship Center would be, what did I recommend?
Six.
Six, thank you, thank you for, we worked on this together.
We did. Can I ask a couple questions about this? Um, you were saying that, um, you need a water rent for each sink?
No, the, the way, the way, we established.
No, sink only is what I was.
We, we established that, and I have to go back to the code then, but sink only is less than one.
Okay.
It, it may be four water un, sorry, one water unit for four sink-only installations. I have to go back and look.
Okay, 'cause in a, that's gonna be a, or is already a professional kitchen, it would need to have one ware washing sink, which is a three-compartment sink, a vegetable washing sink, or food washing sink, and then a separate hand sink.
I don't think it's considered a professional kitchen, um, but I can confirm that, so what, what.
You know, if they have to be approved by the health department.
But I don't think they currently.
I don't think they're even cooking in there now, you know, like, they're.
They don't, everything's trucked in.
Everything brought in.
They're preparing something, but, you know, I mean, whether or not they will eventually do something with that.
So, well, they have this huge kitchen in there though, right?
It is a huge kitchen.
So if they have a huge kitchen in there, it stands to reason that they're gonna use it for public.
There you go. You use, you use the magic word, stands to reason.
Yes, it stands to reason that they're gonna use this to prepare food to serve to the public, which means they have to have a three-compartment sink, or a two-compartment with a dishwasher. They have to have a food washing sink, you know, like raw food washing sink, and a separate hand washing sink, which would be a total of three sinks in the kitchen.
I'll go back, I, I will go back and, and speak with them again. So that's, that's a fair question on the one unit for the kitchen.
Right.
So the question for the board is, um, is five, um, water units appropriate for the five restrooms? I would say yes.
Yes.
Yes, I would say yes.
So, and, so that, so there's a question on water for the kitchen, and I will follow up on that.
And, and do we charge us, and all the, the sinks would all be, they're all one unit though, but they're just broken up into sections?
Wait a minute, what, you mean the three sinks within the kitchen?
Three compartments? Yes.
No, because the, the hand washing sink is a separate sink. The, well, they would all be, all three be separate sinks, and they have to have indirect drains. So they cannot drain into the same area where the hand washing sink would be.
The second element for, um, the Friendship Center is the sewer, sewer units. Now, here we have a, a problem. The, uh, the village code, section ninety-five, ninety-seven, does not identify, sorry, I should've backed up. The water, uh, section of the village code identifies municipal buildings, and I'm equating the Friendship Center to a municipal building. In the sewer section of the code, municipal building is not a category. Um, they, they, they have two very different sets of, um, description of, of buildings. There were two types of categories in sewer that seemed to be close. One was meeting room, and the other was club, comma, service organizations, comma, not-for-profit corporate corporations. Each of those are identified as two sewer units. Now, to describe the Friendship Center, the, I believe that the square footage is six thousand. The configuration of the, the six thousand feet, square feet, you walk into the left, there's a receptionist. Beyond the receptionists are two private offices. On the other side, at the end of the corridor, and in the middle of the opposite corridor, are two restrooms. There is a door that goes into a game room, and another door that goes into an arts and crafts room. The main area in this, at the Friendship Center, is the large meeting area, dining room. I have no idea what the dimensions of that room is. Beyond that is the kitchen. To the left of the kitchen is a corridor, down which there are, I was told, three restrooms. I don't know what else is down that corridor. I did not go into the kitchen. I would recommend that the sewer rent for the, um, a Friendship Center be set at two point five. And, and why? Well, it seems to me that it's bigger than a meeting room, and it's bigger than what we typically have in the village as a club, a service organization, or not-for-profit, or corporations. It doesn't track to anything else that we have in, in our code. We have single-family residential, multifamily residential, and then these other things.
Marie, a question on the, when you're looking at the sewer rent, you're only considering the restrooms?
Yes.
And you're not considering anything that goes into the kitchen sinks?
Yes, I, correct, I'm not, and, and that may be incorrect for you.
I'm just looking at, you know, restaurants and bars and stuff like that, where you would, I mean, I know that you shouldn't be throwing all kinds of junk down the sinks, but, you know, I mean, isn't that part of what goes into the sewer?
Well, the, yeah, that's fair.
Maybe another half, maybe three.
Maybe three.
I would go at least three, I think.
You have to have a garbage disposal or whatever.
Yeah, if there is a.
You know, I didn't ask that question, good, good points, Steve. I, I don't know what the food is served on, whether it's served on.
I forget, and I wasn't there, but I don't know.
Plastic, or styrofoam, or, or wire, I mean. So, um, so we can't establish anything tonight. Uh, I will, I'll follow up on the kitchen, and I'll follow up on the garbage disposal, and I'll send you emails to let you know what I was able to find, so I'm afraid we're gonna have to table this, I apologize. Incomplete staff work.
Thank you for all the work, Marie.
Yes, you're welcome.
And you didn't get, you didn't get lunch out of it?
No, I went to a moment.
Joey, I didn't give you exercise or bingo or something?
Okay, lastly, we have the approval of bills.
Uh, I moved to approve batch five zero three five for a total of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-one cents.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything from the audience?
Uh, no, sorry.
You must have a question, Mike, certain.
No question, just an answer, that all the cutlery, paper, plates, et cetera, is all disposable stuff.
They are, okay.
Based on my one lunch thing, which was pork cutlet, or pork.
For now.
You got lunch?
It could change any time.
Lunch, yeah.
They have a sink.
Pretty decent, actually.
Yeah, I, I've heard the food station, I keep, I keep trying to get it to go there, but it was like.
Have they moved to sustainable disposables yet, or are they using plastic and styrofoam still?
It was plastic, and I think the plates were paper, but it seems to me the cutlery was plastic.
So I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, my god!
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Sue.